All right, I'm going to call this Planning Commission meeting to order. It is 6:33 PM on Monday, August 24th of 2020. Darcy, would you please give me a hand with the roll call?
Commissioner Phillips?
Present.
Commissioner Loebz?
Here.
Commissioner Murphy? Absent. Commissioner Pack?
Here.
Commissioner Pascoe? Commissioner Peterson?
Here.
Commissioner Schrodell?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
And Commissioner Stevens?
Present. Very good, thank you, Darcy. The next line item is public comment. Do we have, this is an opportunity for attendees to provide comment to an item that is not on the agenda. Do we have anyone that would like to speak with us this evening? Darcy?
I do not see any hands raised.
No, what, okay, when I see it on my little list?
You would see a little hand icon pop up.
Okay, okay, so no one from the outside interested in speaking?
Not at this time.
Okay, very good. Wait, oh, go ahead.
I have Greg Ernst who has their hand up.
He's the applicant.
Okay, so this is not the time?
No.
For the applicant to speak.
Unless, unless he has a comment outside of the agenda. A topic that's not included on the agenda. Okay. Do we know, Darcy?
Um, wait, hold on.
The hand is no longer raised on my screen.
Hold on. Greg Ernst, you are on mute.
Okay, how's that?
There you go.
All right, thank you.
Did you have a comment to something that is not on our agenda?
No, I do not.
Okay.
Okay, then you'll be moved back over to an attendee until it is that time in the meeting.
Okay, well, thank you for your patience with my inexperience here.
No worries.
Great. We're glad to have you here, Greg. All right, I'm going to go ahead with my two-page summary here. So here we go, we're moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, Public Hearing. The public hearing is now open for the consideration of Z0079-20-CP and Z0080-20-ZAP, an application by Greg Ernst to change the comprehensive plan designation from rural to rural industrial and to change the zoning designation of the subject property from rural residential farm forest five acre, RRFF5, to rural industrial, RI, to facilitate ongoing industrial operations on the site comprised of two separate tax lots. Clackamas County is abiding by social distancing requirements during the coronavirus pandemic, so this public hearing will be conducted virtually, virtually using the Zoom platform. Panelists for today's hearing, which include members of the Planning Commission and county staff, have both audio and video capability. Audience members who have joined the meeting will have their mics muted unless they wish to testify, in which case they will be called upon to do so by the county staff moderator. Audience members' video will not be turned on at any time. Today's hearing is being recorded as required by law. The county will make every effort to post the recording on the county website as soon as possible. The Planning Commission is charged with making a recommendation on the application to the Board of County Commissioners. The record from this hearing will be forwarded to the Board, which will make the final decision on this matter. The Board will conduct another hearing on this application on September 16, 2020, at 9:30 AM. That hearing will be de novo, meaning that the hearing will be started anew, and additional testimony may be offered. Tonight's hearing will not go beyond 10:00 PM. If not concluded, it will be continued to a date and time certain. The hearing may be continued for other reasons as well. If an announcement of an additional hearing date and time is made tonight, it will be the only notice given of that additional hearing. The public hearing will be conducted as follows. One, Planning and Zoning Division staff report. Two, entry into the record of any additional correspondence received. Three, technical information from other government agencies. Four, testimony by the applicant or representative, maximum length 60 minutes. Five, testimony by representatives of recognized community planning organizations or hamlets. Maximum length 10 minutes per CPO or hamlet. Six, testimony by proponents of the application. Maximum length three minutes per speaker or more, as determined by the Chair. Seven, testimony by opponents of the application, maximum length three minutes per speaker or more, as determined by the Chair. Eight, testimony by persons who are neutral on the application, maximum length three minutes per speaker or more, as determined by the Chair. Nine, applicant's rebuttal, which is limited to arguments addressing evidence already on the record. Maximum length 30 minutes. Ten, Planning and Zoning Division staff's rebuttal, which is limited to addressing evidence already on the record. Eleven, closing the public hearing. And twelve, Planning Commission discussion and action. There is a designated, designated time during the hearing when it will be open for testimony. The Chair will make it clear when this is. If you want to provide testimony, you will utilize the raise hand feature in Zoom if it is available to you. If it is not available to you, an alternative will be provided. Attendees on PC and iPad, you have a raise hand button on the Zoom bar, top or bottom, depending on the device. When the moderator switches you over to provide testimony, your screen will look different for a moment. Primarily, you will see all participants' cameras, not just the one who is speaking. Staff will call upon you when it is time for you to provide testimony. For the record, please state your name and where you are from, or who you are representing when you begin. Once you have provided your testimony, your mic will be muted and your screen will return to normal. The criteria the Planning Commission must use in making its recommendation are listed in the notice given for the public hearing and will be identified when the oral staff report is presented. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward these criteria or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Zoning and Development Ordinance, which the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Please relate any testimony to the identified criteria. Failure by any participant to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Failure by the applicant to raise a constitutional or other challenge to a proposed condition of approval with sufficient specificity may preclude an action for damage in Circuit Court. Make sure to raise any issues you have with the application at tonight's hearing to protect your right to appeal and challenge the county's final decision on those issues. The county's final decision may be appealed to the Land Board, Land, the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals. At this time, I ask the members of the Planning Commission to disclose any ex parte contacts, biases, or conflicts of interest. Please indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact, bias, or conflict of interest, and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. So I will just go down the list, and please just say yes or no if you are disclosing ex parte. Commissioner Phillips?
No.
Commissioner Lopez?
None.
Commissioner Murphy's out, is Commissioner Murphy joined us? He has, hi, Murf. Are, can you give me a yea or nay on ex parte, please?
Nay.
Thank you. Commissioner Pack?
None.
Commissioner Pascoe?
None.
Commissioner Peterson?
No.
Commissioner Schrodell?
No.
Commissioner Wilson?
No.
And myself, no. So I think we're all participating. And now, does any member of the audience wish to challenge any commissioners in partiality? Darcy, do we have any challenges? We do not, very good, okay. I believe it is now time, the Planning and Zoning Division staff will now present the staff report, which is Melissa Aaron's and Mary, oh, that's the wrong person, whoa, Martha Fritzi, you were side by side.
Hope I'm not presenting this one.
And I will ask commissioners, and if it's really important to ask a question during the presentation, feel free to do so, but if you could make note of your questions and ask them at the end, it just helps because many times questions are answered later in the presentation. And with that being said, you're on, Melissa.
Thank you so much, I'm just bear with me while I share screen to get the PowerPoint working here. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hang on, let me just move my Zoom screen over, so it's not in my way, okay. So today, we are considering the Comprehensive Plan Amendment Zone Change from Rural Residential Farm Forest, RRFF5, to Rural Industrial. It's application number Z0079-20-CP and Z0080-20-ZAP. Can everyone hear me, okay?
Yes.
Just want to make sure before I jump into the presentation. Okay, one moment. Just bear with me a second, it's disconnected me from my PowerPoint, hang on one moment. Okay, here we go. So the project area consists of two legal properties located at 23020 and 23340, South Eagle Creek Road. Together, they are 4.27 acres and are both zoned RRFF5. The site currently contains a mix of rural industrial and commercial uses, specifically a septic servicing company and a woodworking manufacturer. Historically, the site has been used for a mixture of rural industrial and commercial uses, and the existing onsite uses.
Um, Melissa, I'm really sorry to interrupt.
No, no problem.
Oh, Commissioner Pack mentioned something that I was gonna do, we're not seeing the PowerPoint anymore.
Oh, no, okay.
It says we see your screen, but it's just blank.
Okay.
Hey, we're back to the group.
Sorry, let me redo it.
We're all waiting for somebody else to jump in.
Yeah, you know, it's not letting me.
We can see it now, Melissa.
Yeah.
It, the problem is, it's not letting me change slides when I do it that way, so let me try, one moment. I think it's having issues with it being full screen. Let's try this. Thanks for bearing with me.
No problem.
Okay. Okay, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, let's go with that. All right, as you can see from this slide, the subject site is located directly adjacent to a rural industrial area across Eagle Creek Road there in kind of the light purple color. Proper notice has been provided for these applications consistent with state law in Section 1302 of the ZDO. Notice was sent out for a Planning Commission meeting on July 20th, 2020. No responses were received. Approval criteria for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment consists of the county's comprehensive plan and the statewide planning goals. Approval criteria for the proposed zone change consist of Section 1202.03 of the county's zoning and development ordinance. The consistency findings provided in the Planning Commission staff report are summarized as follows. In order to ensure consistently, consistency with statewide planning goals, staff were required to find the proposal consistent with Goal 12 and the transportation planning rule. As such, planning staff and engineering staff closely reviewed the traffic impact analysis memo submitted by the applicant. Clackamas County engineering staff concurs with the conclusions in the application's middle and has determined that there will be no significant impact on the transportation system as a result of the proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment and zone change, due to the minimal level of traffic increases anticipated. As such, staff finds the proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment and zone change consistent with Goal 12. The proposal was also found consistent with all the other applicable goals, and detailed findings start on page six of the staff report. Planning staff also find that the proposed Comprehensive Plan is, Plan Amendment is consistent with all applicable Comprehensive Plan policies. Specifically, the site is already developed and does not contain any natural resource areas or require new public services, and is found consistent with the applicable policies of Chapter Three and Seven. The traffic analysis and trip generation estimates provided by the applicant indicate that the proposal would be consistent with all of the applicable policies of Chapter Five, Transportation. The subject site also meets the specific plan policies for the rural industrial plan designation, which will be summarized on the following slide for zone change approval criteria that we're looking at now. For approval criteria related to the zone change, we look to zoning and development ordinance, Section 1202.03. 1202.03A requires consistency with the comprehensive plan. Specifically, we looked at the plan policies for the rural industrial plan designation, as shown on the screen. Under Policy 4.MM.3.1 above, the applicant has submitted evidence as part of the application, which, along with four past county-approved non-conforming use alteration approvals, clearly demonstrates that the entire subject site has a historical commitment to industrial uses. As such, the first criteria is met, and the proposed zone change can be found compliant with Policy 4.MM.3. Section 1202.03B of the Zoning and Development Ordinance addresses the proposals need for public services. The applicant has demonstrated that the onsite septic system and water service are sufficient for industrial uses, and staff finds the proposed zone change compliant with 1202.03B. As previously discussed, the anticipated traffic impact from the proposed Comprehensive Plan Zone Change would be minimal, and the transportation system will remain adequate. As such, the proposed zone change can be found compliant with Section 1202.03C. Since the anticipated traffic impacts are minimal and the area is already developed with a safe and operational transportation system, the proposed zone change was also found compliant with 1202.03D. In summary, staff is recommending approval of the proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment from rural to rural industrial, and approval of the proposed zone change from rural residential farm forest to rural industrial, or RI. That concludes staff's presentation, and staff's available for any questions.
And are there any questions for staff from the commission?
I have a question, but I can't figure out how to raise my hand when I'm in the screen mode.
Go ahead and launch, Mary, please.
Okay, it's more of a technical question for my education. For the defining whether the impacts to the traffic are significant, the staff report says it's 400 trips per day. Is that, does that number change based on the street classification?
It's my understanding that's a threshold from, and it's cited in the staff report, and I'm not as familiar with it off the top of my head, because we had to ask our county engineering staff where it came from, but it's some type of state threshold. So it's, it's, that would be more of a question for county engineering, but I can certainly try to find it in our staff report where we explain what that is. I don't believe it changes with the classification, it's just a trip threshold.
Okay, I was worried about the number, but this, the street that the subject property is on is arterial. I think it was a major arterial, so I think 400 sounds fine. I'm just curious if that would change if it was like a local street or something.
I'm not sure about that, but it, the staff report has at least the specifics of where to, where to find where that threshold and requirement comes from.
Okay, thank you.
May I jump in?
Yes, please.
Hi, this is Martha Fritzi, I'm Principal Planner with the Planning and Zoning Division. So the way that the language reads, I pull up her staff report, it implies that the Oregon Highway Plan is identifying or is quantifying significant effect with this 400-trip threshold. It doesn't specify on any type of street, because the analysis you have to do is to identify where, if there is a significant effect, and it's, it's almost like a, for lack of a better term, a safe harbor. If you're not showing more than 400 trips, it appears to say that you can, you can consider that a small increase in traffic, which doesn't qualify as a significant effect.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other, any other questions from the commission for staff?
I had a question, this is Carrie Pack, I had a question on that same issue. And it wasn't so much about the number as much as, when do you, when does, does the county take into consideration for the cumulative effects of these individual changes to the land use? So this particular proposal probably wouldn't cause a significant increase in traffic, but, and another one, and another one, and another one probably wouldn't by themselves. But once you start adding all these together, at some point, there probably would be an impact, but I don't know how that gets analyzed or kept in track by the, by the county. So it's, again, more information for me more than anything else.
Well, that would be outside the scope of the approval criteria that we're looking at here for the complaint zone change, but I understand what you're saying, it's probably something that's looked at more in terms of our engineering department when they kind of do their long-term planning, and then there's also longer-range planning going on at the county to some degree that looks at that over time. Martha might want to weigh in as well on that, but yeah, that wouldn't be an approval criteria we're looking at here necessarily.
Well, I think, this is Martha again, I think she's right. The transportation group looks, looks at our transportation system plan periodically, and it's based on the zoning that's on the ground, and so if properties change, then it would affect their analysis of the larger system as a whole. I can say that zone changes don't happen very often, though. So it's not, there's not, there would not be a big cumulative effect in the time periods that the engineering department has, you know, looking at their transportation system plan.
And I just want to mention, I'm not seeing hands up just because of the PowerPoint presentation, so if you're waiting for me to call on you, please just jump in if you have a question. No other questions from the commission?
I have one more question.
Please go.
This is Carrie Pack again. So I read in the staff report, it indicated that there were not, no natural resources or stream nearby the property, and as can be seen by the graphics that you're showing on the screen right now, there clearly is a drainage to the right of this property. So how do, how, I don't understand how that statement can be made when the property is literally adjacent to natural resources.
Certainly, we looked into that because from the aerial, it's clear there's some type of vegetation corridor could, could be indicative of wetlands, stream. What's going on on the property, there's actually a channelized culvert, a drainage culvert, that's been there as far back as anyone can remember. The applicant, we asked him to provide information regarding that as part of the incomplete letter that was initially sent out and the response, and that's all in kind of the packet that was sent to you, you'll see there. So there's nothing that's a designated habitat area. We're outside of the urban growth boundary here, so we're not looking at any, you know, habitat, any Hakka Habitat Conservation Area or WOCA Water Resources areas. There's no state-designated wetlands on the property. There's no wetlands directly, you know, adjacent to the property line that we could tell. So there's nothing really that would trigger us to take a closer look at anything considered to be a natural resource on the property from our.
So there's no regulation, state or county doesn't have a regulation or practice that says if you have a known or visible natural resources like this within certain distance within the property that you would look into, provide additional resources, like a buffer or, or some sort of, you know, distance from the property itself. I mean, I just can't believe that it, obviously, the, there's no vegetation on the property because it's been denuded use, from the previous uses over the years. Had the, the culvert were channelized, channelization hadn't occurred, it's very possible that this stream would have extended into the property, but I have no idea. So I'm just kind of curious as to how you could make that kind of statement.
Right, so, so I think it might help if I explain the topography there a little bit also, which you can't see from kind of the flat image. It's a very steep drop-off, so the property is kind of elevated up, and then you drop down into a ravine. It's, it's not what we call a risca, a river and stream conservation area, which would have, in the case of development, a buffer like you're talking about. So it's not a protected resource in that regard. There, like I said, it's not, also not a state-designated wetland. So there wasn't anything on the property that we could, per our current Comprehensive Plan and Zoning and Development Ordinance, consider a natural resource or any of those river and stream conservation areas.
If after this zone designation change, additional development on the site is proposed, would that be something that would be looked into in more detail during the development permit review process?
We would look at it again, but nothing would change, because there wouldn't be any modification to that river and stream conservation area. We have them all mapped already, so we have a map with different categories of rivers and streams that are afforded levels of protection when we're reviewing development projects. This drainage course that potentially is in the bottom of that ravine there off-property is not one of those mapped river and stream conservation areas. Because it's outside of the urban growth boundary, it's also not protected Habitat Conservation Area, nor is it mapped as such. Sometimes the overlay extends outside of the UGB, and it doesn't even include that, as far as I remember.
Melissa. What is the, oh, sorry.
Melissa, it's, from what I read, this property does not have a drain field. It just has a holding tank for septic? Is that.
Correct.
Properties?
It has a holding tank as approved from DEQ, and I believe we have an explanation in there that it serves both properties through their permit. And our septic department has been working closely with the applicant and DEQ to get that permitted and all above board for the existing property.
Okay, so if this property goes on with further development, we would see the requirement to upgrade its septic system?
Correct, septic would be looking at it again in detail if there was any proposed development onsite.
And if we see standing water in the ditch next to it, this may hamper or have something to do with the placement of this drain field, I would imagine, if my correct.
I would imagine that our septic staff would take a close look at that if that was the case, yes.
Commissioner Lopez, did you have something you wanted to add?
Um, yeah, I wanted to ask, what is the zoning of the contiguous and surrounding properties? I don't know if you can use a pointer, but I was just curious as to, you know, if you go around the property, what are the other zones?
So I have our Comprehensive Plan map up here, can everyone still see my screen?
Yes.
So, so that's gonna, you know, obviously correspond with the zoning. I can try to pull the zoning map up, but this should give you a pretty good idea. So the orange, kind of yellow color is all rural, so that's gonna be your kind of rural residential. So, that's gonna be your kind of rural residential zoning districts. And then the lilac is rural industrial. And then you can see, there's kind of the dark green is our forest, so that would be our timber zone. And then the lighter green is agriculture, so that would be our EFU or our Ag Forest Zone. So, hopefully, that kind of answers your question. There's a little bit of rural commercial in pink there also. So, it, the subject property is kind of border an area with rural commercial and rural industrial.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I think we're gonna move on to the next staff. Have we received any correspondence on this matter other than those items included in the meeting packet?
No.
Okay, thanks, Melissa. Okay, are there any other government agencies here to provide technical information related to this application? Okay. One second. I gotta make sure I'm on target here. One moment. All right. I think we're now at the application, or applicant. The applicant may now present the proposal. You have a maximum of 60 minutes.
Hello. I don't know what's expected to propose, other than everything that's been proposed there that you guys have seen. The, my experience with the property has gone way back quite a number of years, and I am one of the adjoining property owners of this. And one of the reasons that I bought property was I wanted to see a development of the property that was favorable with the neighborhood and the neighboring things. So, I think everything's been well-presented, and it just is a very natural progression for this property to have a zoning that is consistent with its historical use, as I think was made aware Leather's Oil Company and Truck Repairs were on that facility and that site before the overlay in 1964 of the RRFF use. And I don't understand why, at that time, it wasn't designated as rural industrial. But that's how things go. DEQ, there was significant cleaning up on the property and from the previous uses. And if that went well, but it's never gonna be suitable for homes. It's not a development site for any rural residential use. And so, this just seems to be the natural thing to do with the property. I guess that's it.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
I'll jump in really quick, Amy. Greg, if you, just, I'm curious in your own words, if you could tell us a little bit about kind of what your vision for the property is and what you see is in its future, if it's any different than it is now?
Well, certainly. You know, it's always nice to, every time we've done something with the property, like the cabinet shop, which is a very natural use for it, there is a long, lengthy process to have re-approved. And so, we would never do anything outside of what's consistently there. And it could never be, I guess you could say, whatever use was done there. If there was a building that was a warehouse or anything, it wouldn't, nothing would be more impact than what's already there or across the street. You know, there's a foundry across the street there 24 hours a day. We have the gun club right next to us on the south side. We have this. So, I think its use right now is kind of like full-tilt trucking and, you know, a lot of storage. So, we don't know where that's gonna go. We just want to kind of settle it in. And of course, anytime we would change anything, it would go through the proper procedure with the county for what's consistent with its use. Did that make any sense to you?
It did. It made perfect sense. I appreciate that. You know, for what it's worth, I live out here in Boring. I know, I'm in your neck of the woods. I drive past here all the time. I totally agree with you that, you know, it's, I think our rural area is in need of more industrial-type lands, and this is appropriate for that, you know, that, you know, that there is a historical site with Philip Foster Farm right down your street. But I think what you're doing is very consistent with everything else in that neighborhood, and it makes a lot of sense.
I'd like to comment that our neighbor across the street, the foundry, they've been very good neighbors, and they've mitigated any issues with noise or odors that they used to have. And I'll tell you this, there'll never be like a rock-crushing foundry going 24 hours a day, you know, with a lot of lights and, you know, all those things you see in those horrible movies of destruction.
That's great. All right. Is there any other question for Mr. Ernst? Okay, wow. I'm not seeing any hands up. Oh, Commissioner Wilson, did you have a question?
No, I don't have a question.
Okay, very good. All right, I'm gonna go ahead then and move on. Are there any representatives of a community planning organization or hamlet here to speak this evening? Nothing, Darcy? Okay, very good. Does anyone, you know what, I'm just gonna ask, is there anyone that has signed up to testify? So, I don't have to go through in favor and in opposition or any of, is anyone waiting to testify, Darcy?
I have David Piper as an attendee. I don't know if they wish to speak or not.
Okay, well, we have those to speak in favor, in opposition, or neutral. So, if we have one and they would like to testify, we would like to hear from them. Okay, I'm gonna assume not. Oh, here we go. David, I believe you're on mute.
There we go.
There he is. Hi, David. Welcome, and thank you for joining us this evening. Did you have some testimony you would like to give to the Commission this evening?
I didn't. I'm on the board of the Philip Foster Farm, and I'm just here to get some information, find out what's going on. That's all.
Wonderful. Well, welcome, and we're glad you're here tonight.
Thank you.
Darcy, anyone else?
I just will say that Philip Foster Farm is near and dear to my heart. You guys do a great job out here, and thanks for all that you do.
Well, will we remember that when we get our conditional use permit coming up? It's in the mail.
In the mail. Cool. Okay, I think at this point, I'm really doubting that the applicant would have a rebuttal to all that testimony. So, let's move to a rebuttal from the staff, which I, again, doubt. We're gonna see a rebuttal from Melissa?
Nope, nothing to add on my end.
Very, very good. All right, let's see. Does any person wish to request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the application? If someone does request to present additional testimony, the Commission will need to determine if they wish to continue the hearing or hold the record open. If the Commission grants a continuance, the hearing shall be continued to a date, time, and place certain, at least seven days from the date of the initial hearing. If the Commission leaves the record open for additional written evidence, arguments, or testimony, the record shall be left open for at least seven days. The applicant is allowed at least seven days after the record is closed to all other parties to submit final written arguments in support of the application. Alternatively, the applicant may waive this seven-day period. Does the applicant choose to waive the additional seven days? Not really sure why I'm reading this, but it's in red, so I have to.
Okay, I just unmuted.
No one's asking to hold the record open. I don't think we have to. Yeah, I think we just need to make sure no one's asking to hold the record open.
Okay, thanks, Mary. Okay, doesn't sound like there is. Okay, then, the public testimony portion of the hearing is now closed. See, are there any further questions of staff from the Planning Commission? Okay, wow.
I would like to make one comment.
Please.
That I looked up this property on CMAP, and when I went under documents, I had never seen so many documents to one piece of property. I highly recommend, if you get a chance, to take a look at it. It goes back to 1869. It's pretty interesting, actually. I'd just like to throw that out there.
All right. Well, I think since public testimony is closed, we are now, we are, let's see, it's time for the Commission to discuss the application. I'll jump in. Okay, Tom?
Well, this one seems like a no-brainer to me. My reaction was similar to what Greg stated. It's like, why was this ever zoned the way it was in the first place? Doesn't make sense to me.
Welcome to Clackamas County, Tom.
Yeah. And so, it clearly beats all the criteria. And there's really no point in making this, the owner have to go through this exercise every time they want to change, change something when it's clearly should have been zoned that way in the first place. So, I'm in favor of the staff recommends, staff's recommendation.
How about you, Commissioner Wilson? Can you give us your thoughts?
I'm good to go with this. This looks like, like Tom said, it's a slam dunk here. It's no-brainer.
Great. Commissioner Loebz, how about you?
No opposition. Everything looks in order, so everything's fine with me.
Commissioner Phillips?
I'm happy to make a motion whenever anyone's ready.
All righty, we'll count on you. How about you, Commissioner Pack?
I too am in with the commissioners that's spoken up so far. I would, however, like to get, and this could be something that I could do on my own because I'm subject to the Commission. I'm a little bit disturbed by the discussion we had on the natural resources aspect, just because this area is not in the urban growth boundary, that we pretty much don't have any regulations and/or practices for how to deal with what is clearly a natural running right next to the property. So, again, the application itself obviously meets all of the proposed criteria and findings are fine the way it's been laid out. So, I have no opposition for this particular request. But I would request to the staff that I'd like to get some additional information so that I can get myself educated more with the Clackamas County rules and regulations, because it just doesn't feel right to me that all of those, you know, rules that apply inside would just be ignored on the, just because you're not in the urban growth boundary.
And we're certainly, Commissioner Pack, able to ask the staff to provide an educational opportunity for the Commission. We could, you know, ask them to do a, you know, inside urban growth bounty, outside natural resource. I'm sure Jennifer would be very happy to accommodate.
And again, it might just be me, and, you know, other, I don't want to waste other commissioners' time and energy if it's just something that I need to learn about, which I'm perfectly willing to do on my own, so.
Great, thank you. How about you, Commissioner Schrute?
I just want to say thank you for all the presentations, the documents that showed up because it makes it easy to support something. So, I look forward to the motion.
Great. How about you, Murf?
No, I'm allowed, I'm with Carrie on this also. I'd like to see more work done on our natural research project.
Okay.
Yes, I'm all for work done.
Okay, maybe a nice opportunity for an educational presentation.
Absolutely.
Great. How about you, Commissioner Pascoe?
I will just second, Melissa, great job. You know, I drive through here all the time. I think this property is really consistent with everything else that's going on around it. I'm really comfortable with this.
And I just mirror all the comments. I too, my vet is over there, and I'm through that area all the time. And this, I'm very supportive. I'm quite happy that just across the road, there's an industrial piece. So, there is a link or connection that helped me in seeing that picture. But a very excellent presentation, Melissa, and well-done on the application side. So, thank you. And I think we're ready for you, Mary.
Excellent. Then I would move that we recommend approval of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and zone change applications, Z0079-20-CP and Z0080-20-ZAP, based on the findings in the August 24, 2020 staff report.
I'll second that.
Great, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, Darcy, would you do a roll call, please?
Somebody'll figure that out.
Commissioner Stevens? Yes. Commissioner Loebz?
Yes.
Commissioner Pack?
Yes.
Commissioner Schrute?
Yes, hi.
Commissioner Murphy? Commissioner Pascoe?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
It's a unanimous vote. Excellent. Thank you very much, Darcy. I will, this public hearing is now closed. And now we'll move along to other business. Board of County Commissioner updates?
So, that would be me. I am playing the part of Jennifer Hughes today. Unfortunately, you're gonna have to listen to my computer, and I apologize for those of you who weren't here earlier. It is my computer, not a vacuum. So, I will talk as fast as I can and as loudly as I can. So, you should have received in your packet two updates from Glenn Hamburg regarding two items that you have recently come across your desks for public hearing, one of them being the 6.42 acre expansion of the City of Sandy's Urban Growth Boundary. The Board of County Commissioners approved that with no changes from what you had recommended approval of. And the other item is ZDO 276, which are the Minor and Time-Sensitive Comprehensive Plan and Zoning and Development Ordinance Amendments. The Board of County Commissioners also approved that, and it looks like it was approved as recommended by the Planning Commission. With one exception, they did not approve the reduction of the minimum setback for commercial dog kennels and rural residential areas. And so, that will stay the way it is currently in our zoning code, which is 200 feet setback from all property lines in the rural residential zones. And that is it, I believe. And I think at one of your last Planning Commission hearings, I had sent over a summary of the mining application that we had way back when, when we could do things in person. But if I did not, I apologize. The Board also approved that back in the, gosh, at the beginning of the year. And so, that, as far as I know, is moving forward. That would be the cabin Phase 4 mining application. And that's it for the BCC updates.
Martha, I had a question on one of those. For the ZDO 276 with the comp plan amendments, in our recommendation, we had talked about pulling the Philo portion out until it can be looked at further with a process established for the use of the funds. What did the BCC end up doing with that portion of our recommendation?
So, I'll be 100% honest. I was not at that hearing. I'm going off of what Glenn wrote, which indicates to me that they took your entire recommendation with that one exception. I can certainly follow up on that and get back to you if it's something different than that.
Okay, thank you.
I'll have to write myself a note because I will inevitably I'll have to write myself a note because I will inevitably forget. Go ahead.
What, Ryan?
I would just say I was curious about that, too. I had read behind between the lines that they accepted, but the question is, you know, did they do anything beyond that with that particular issue? Did they have a discussion with county transportation staff?
I can follow up on that, and we can get back to you. Certainly.
So nothing else from the Board of County Commissioners, Martha? Okay, any any questions for Martha from the commission? Okay, let's move on to the July 13, 2020 minutes, draft minutes that we all received. Were there any corrections or anything anyone would like to discuss? I would accept a motion then.
I would move that we approve the July 13, 2020 minutes as written.
Thank you, Mary.
I'll say that.
Great, Tom, thank you. If there's no further discussion, I don't think we're supposed to do by hand on Zoom. So will you do roll call again, Darcy, after you unmute, mute?
Thank you. I need that little extra bit of help there. Okay, Commissioner Pascoe?
Hi.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillip?
Hi.
Commissioner Murphy?
Hi.
Commissioner Peterson?
Hi.
Commissioner Stevens?
Hi.
Commissioner Pack?
Hi.
Commissioner Schrute?
Hi.
Commissioner Loebz was absent. Right, I was absent, so I have to abstain.
Oh, very good. All right, I think we are there. Schedule review, it looks like we have a meeting September 14th, is that correct?
Yes. So on September 14th, you will have another proposed comp plan amendment zone change, and Glenn Hamburg will be bringing that to you. And that's all you have on your schedule. I can tell you that I can bring back to Jennifer the question about possibly doing a work session or training session related to natural resource regulations and see how she feels about that. I'm also expecting to come to you sometime this fall and the next perhaps October-ish with a work session. If you recall, about a year ago, the planning department started working on what we're now calling the Housing Strategies Project or the Land Use Housing Strategies Project. We present an issue paper to you outlining the different phases for different strategies that we wanted to do a lot of housing work in both our comprehensive plan and our zoning code to include also the code work that needs to be done in response to House Bill 2001, the middle housing bill that came out of the 2019 legislature. So we are working diligently on phase one of that housing strategies project. And I think in the next month or two would be a good time for us to come to you and have a conversation about what's happening in phase one. So expect to see that coming up in the next little while. And that's it, as far as I know. The Board of County Commissioners hearing for this item is on September 16th. I believe, is that correct, Jennifer? I mean, Melissa?
Oh, yes, I believe it was the 16th.
And then the Board of County Commissioners hearing for for the next one coming up is scheduled for October 14th.
Great. All right. We also have, it says here, Board of County Commissioners again. Was that just regarding their schedule or?
Yes.
Okay, okay, just what you've covered. Great. All right, is there any other further business for the commission? Wow, I, we may have set a record.
You're right.
Impressive. All righty, well, then I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 7:28 PM.